Call the order, the Tuesday, January 24th. State Council meeting, stamp the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody can mic up.
What TV just went off?
Okay, agenda, do we have any modifications?
Yes, Mayor, and members of City Council, we have one item that needs to be added to the consent agenda, should be labeled E1, it'll be the acceptance of the pay equity report that was filed today, January 24th, 2023.
Any other changes? I need a motion in a second for the agenda.
I'll make the motion, second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero. Consent agenda, I need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Was that Travis?
Yeah. Have at it.
All right, and this is just a question, more for future, for the police chief, when we start, I see quite a few repairs going on, you know, in the monthly ledger and so on, and I'm just curious how that, how that works when we start leasing cars? Are those repairs included in the deal, or do we still carry that cost?
We still, we still carry the cost of the repairs, we did not opt for their repair maintenance deal, so we'd still be in charge of all the repairs and costs. The nice thing is about, most of them will be sold or shortly sold after their warranty's up, so when, under the lease program, we'll watch the mileage and make sure that we're leasing them every three years, or rotating them every three to four years to make sure that the warranty keeps up, so hopefully they'll be all under warranty after a certain point.
For the majority of the time.
Yep.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Also curious, on page 16 of our packet, we've got some airline tickets that are charged to the fire department, and Chief, maybe you could fill me in on what that's about?
Yep, that's the Fire Department Instructors Conference, that's in Indianapolis, Indiana, in April, so myself will be going down along with Jason Alaski, one of our firefighters. Instructors Conference to help with teaching of the organization, and then it also gives us the opportunity to look at different pieces of equipment that are needed for the fire department.
All right, thank you. Another one that kind of stood out to me was, we had, this is probably for you, Zach.
Sure.
We had a $4113 annual dues to the I-94 West Corridor Coalition.
Correct.
That seems like a lot to me, do we get something for that?
Yeah, you get to be part of the coalition, so essentially what happened, they helped us get the interchange and provide grant money, so the coalition is a coalition of cities that utilizes a company called Vector, I believe is the company?
I think so, yeah.
And they help with grant opportunities for us.
Okay.
So we ended up getting a lot of our federal grant money from that agency to be able to fund like the interchange, so essentially we may not get the dollar amount per year, but we get it overall, long term.
Okay, so we're paying essentially for a service?
Correct.
Through them to research grants?
Correct, research grant for us, to give us anything related to transportation, they're also the ones that helped us, we, they found the one that we approved a few meetings ago about 94 westbound or eastbound, we had to choose which one you guys wanted to do, they're the ones that helped with that grant opportunity as well, so we provided the resolutions that we support, was it the Gap project between Monticello and Albertville, and we provided that one, so they're gonna do that grant opportunity for us, so.
They do a lot of de facto lobbying.
Correct, correct.
All right, well, it seemed a little, little high for dues.
I understand.
So I, I was just curious about it, but that makes sense. And then last thing, I asked about this at the last meeting, how we calculate residents' sewer bills, and you guys explained that, and that, that's, that works for me, but I wondered after seeing our always sizable Met Council sewer bill, how do they calculate our use?
Met Council, I don't know how they calculate our use, to be honest, because they tell us one year in advance of what their sewer use is gonna be, so.
It's straight population.
Yeah, it could be straight population, or a number of homes that we have in our city, I don't exactly know, because it's, should be based on flow, I would assume, but they somehow tell us what it's gonna be per month, in the month of November or October every year. So we know exactly what it's gonna be every year before the budget even starts, so we just budget for it every year at this amount of money, because we know exactly what it's gonna be for the whole year. So they tell us it's gonna be X amount per month, and that's it.
And are we, well, we can, we can talk about that in more detail later, okay.
That's how it works, but they tell us, you know, in advance, and we say, okay, it's gonna be amount, amount per month, and then we backfill that in to figure out our rates, to say, okay, it's gonna be operations plus that cost for us to have sewer service, and that's gonna be how much it costs per resident.
All right, okay, thanks, and then one last comment on our additional consent agenda item, the.
Pay equity report.
Pay equity thing, and, and that was all fine to me, the only thing that jumped out at me was we have 35 employees and 21 job classes, and I thought that was kind of remarkable.
Yep.
How many individual situations we actually have.
We have lots of individuals, you got it.
Yeah, all right, that's all I got.
Anybody else have anything?
I'm fine.
Okay, I need, got a motion in a second, all those in favor, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed say no, so that's four to zero. Open forum, do we have anybody here for open forum? Do we have anybody online for open forum?
Do not.
All right, staff, council, council updates? Zach?
Yep, only one update tonight, Mayor and Council, last meeting we discussed about doing council retreat, and we decided on February 22nd at the meeting, we had a follow-up meeting the next day of department heads, and said that February 22nd's not gonna work for our department heads, so we sent out a poll to you guys, and March 8th will be the day that works for everybody, so we will have the council retreat on March 8th, it'll be five to nine in city council chambers here, we're trying to organize a couple people from the League of Minnesota Cities or some sort of organization to be here to provide some additional training that would be helpful for everybody, so. March 8th, you'll see an invite from me, hopefully tomorrow. That's all I got, thank you so much. Amy?
Um, not much of an update, I am out next week, so if you need anything, get ahold of Zach.
Drop cookies.
What?
Going on a cruise.
No, no, probably in Texas, but, um, some padres, okay.
Oh, I'm gonna go fly some kites.
Marty?
Mayor and Council, I've only got one thing, it's to do with ice rinks, staff is proposing not to flood the ice rinks this year, we're so far down the season, that I don't think there's gonna be much value in there by the time we get them frozen and up to usability, it's gonna be mid-February, and that's what, usually when we start to lose the ice anyway, so I'm, you know, unfortunately, I don't think it pays for us to do it this year.
I haven't had anybody ask about it, so.
I had one person that was gonna be part of my updates, was asking you, but I was told to wait.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, just an update, back last fall, I took my inspector test, Zach may have given you an update in the weekly update, but received the results here a couple weeks ago, so I have passed that test, so no issues with that, so, inspector won at this time.
Evening, Mayor and Council, we held the interviews for the embedded social worker a couple weeks ago, we selected one, unfortunately, she declined due to personal reasons, so we're going back, Hennepin County's posting again for just our three cities, to go back and interview another batch, so hopefully by March, we'll be able to have our embedded social worker in. Held a meeting with Commissioner Anderson and Hennepin County Attorney Marardi the other day, talked about crime and what the new attorney's gonna be doing in the future with programs, so, very interesting.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yesterday I had the pleasure to sit down and talk to the evidence, specifically planning with Ed, I think you made a wise decision and offered the position to him, and as you continue to staff up, I inform myself to be here to help you through that.
All right, thank you.
No update, sir.
Scott?
I don't really have any kind of an update, obviously, one of these two gentlemen is Ed. It's not Ryan.
Were they happy to come up?
Yeah.
May the Council have you.
So we approved his, as a city planner position.
Yes, this is Ed Corton.
Corton.
Yes, sir.
Evening, Ed.
Good evening.
Thank you.
You have a wonderful community, I'm excited about being here.
You have any questions for us, or any, you probably got them hammered out with your interview team, but.
I had a, I had an eventful day yesterday, and it was informative, it was wonderful, I want to thank staff for, you know, being very cordial and answering my questions, and I'm happy to be here, really am.
Cool, all right.
So, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, looking forward to working with you and the Planning Commission, and make the community a better community.
All right, well, I have none for you, but I hope for a smooth transition for you as you make your move, so.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna warn you, 'cause I warn everybody.
Oh, no, let me.
It's nothing personal.
Don't scare them right away. Don't scare them right away, Scott.
I understand.
So does that mean you, you accepted the job?
Yes, I have accepted.
Okay.
And I'm looking at what, middle of March, depending on wrapping up some, a couple, a couple projects where I'm at, depending on the weather conditions, I'm getting here, 'cause I know that's a time when you can get a lot of, a lot of snow.
I would like to say we got most of it already. Running out of places to put it. I'm with you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Is that it?
That's all I got.
Haven't you got any?
I have none.
I met with the Northwest, North, what is it called, NWHL, or the?
League of Municipalities.
Suburban Hennepin.
Yeah, the Northwest, and apparently, they, they removed the dues this year, but we only have one, one slot now, but, I mean, it doesn't, that means, you know, either hire or date can go to it, but, that's all I got.
And then tomorrow year will be at the State of the Cities event.
Yep, yep, almost got, shouldn't hide it in a meeting, but I'm good, I should be able to, I should be able to make it, perfect.
I don't have anything.
Okay, so we'll move on to new business, item F, is that, who's handling that?
It'll probably be a tag team between John and I, discussion on low, low-density residential moratorium, so this was a discussion item that you had brought up, Mayor, about having a discussion about possibly doing this, we did bring it to, was it staff meeting or department head meeting a week ago or two weeks ago, to discuss about what would be the ramifications of that, what would be the process for it, what would be the reasons for it, so on and so forth, some of the reasons that we were stated, or that Mayor Fisher had stated, was that we're doing a transportation plan amendment, we're trying to figure out exactly what that's gotta be, only, our only concern that we have with those things is that we're not sure of the ramifications otherwise, but I think it's gonna naturally happen, at least what staff feels, is it may naturally happen just because of the current market.
Vulnerability.
I don't know if we rely on, I would rely heavily on landforms discussion points with performing a moratorium, we did it back in 2020, and I think it was due to the fact that we had so much going on at one time, we couldn't keep up.
Yeah.
And so we said, we're just done for a little bit, and that was a one-year thing, and basically, once it ended, it was like it never stopped, so it's been run crazy since 2021 until 2022, and since then, we haven't had a lot, we've had the one, Braber and Trails one, which has been put on the back burner with the transportation plan discussion we have with, with Fernbrook, and what are we gonna do with the transportation plan, and then we actually approved a transportation plan amendment after we learned about those things, that's the only development we've had that's been low-density in the past, I would say at least six months, if not longer, so, trying to figure out if it's really worth us doing a moratorium, and also help would be helping Ed get on board for his process, because of the fact that he wouldn't have to come in and deal with low-density residential development right away, getting him up to speed on code and ordinances and zoning and stuff would be another reason why we'd want to do one, but, again, I'm not sure if we need to put a moratorium on it, there hasn't been a lot of interest, so.
My, my only concern was, and you did cover some of them, we're down one on Planning Commission, we do have a lot of updates, we're planning on doing transportation on land use.
Yep.
Planning staff is a little short right now, and, and I, my concern was, if we get another development coming, like the Lee development, like the, where, we, we may be obligated, depending on what kind of application it is.
Correct.
Since we have everything up in the air, that's why I figured we could just put the brakes.
I know that we talked about it, and Kevin Shea at Landform had some conversations of how possibly, the one thing we could always use in our back pocket is we, everything's zoned A1 right now, so we could deny the zoning, and say we're not gonna do a zoning change, which would then.
Because they would have to rezone.
They would have to rezone, and so because it's, just because it means it's guided use, doesn't mean we have to approve the rezoning, without a rezoning approval, they would not be able to build low-density residential.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't aware that we could deny a zoning request if.
I was not either, until Kevin had explained that to me.
Is there any downside to doing a moratorium?
I don't know exactly, John, maybe you could speak on that more?
Well, my concern was just, does it paint the city of Dayton's name in terms of development? Or does it put you out there in a bad spotlight, was my concern.
Oh.
You know, this is the time of year when typically, as a planner, you're seeing the developers start coming around and talking about future development, because you got things to do before they get.
Slow season.
Yeah, so it's, it is slow, Zach, if anybody can make an appointment.
But, I mean, whether we, whether we put the brakes on officially, or give them no's on their zoning requests, seems like the end result is still.
Where are we at with the, the fee lawsuit thing?
There.
Our housing first deal?
Yep, so the last update I gave you guys was our most recent update, which would have been, it's, the trial is set for October or November of this year.
Oh, so we're way out.
We're ways away from that.
Oh, yeah, we're a ways out from that. That's the most recent update that I have, I have, otherwise I've heard nothing.
So how would this work for, well, specifically, the Lee development, so we gave appointment, any plat approval on that one?
That one's gonna go.
That one's gonna go no matter what.
That one seems like it'll go, yeah.
They gave enough right away, no matter how we wanted to realign the road.
Right, no, I understand the flexibility on the transportation plan, but if we had a moratorium, that does not have final plat approval.
Yep, so that would be grandfathered into having final plat approval without having actual final plat approval, so that would, we would put a moratorium on any preliminary plats that we'd be able to approve, is how we would do it, because currently, we have no other ones in concept plan at all.
Sitting out there, yeah.
Yeah, we have nothing in the works, so we'd put it as a moratorium of no preliminary plats would be able to come in, we could do a concept plan, so say somebody comes in and says, hey, I wanna do this in a few months, and we'd say, yeah, that looks great, or no, we wanna adjust this or that, but, they would not be able to officially come in for preliminary plant, preliminary plant is where we have all of our approvals done, basically, once we've approved that, it's just a rubber stamp for final, which is why we would deny or say a moratorium on preliminary plants and not final plants.
Sure, and would this apply to all types of housing, or are we talking about just?
Just low density.
Just low density, so, mixed-use apartment building?
Yep.
Condos, I know that would be impacted at this point.
RE, nope.
Well, that's just a zoning change, isn't it?
That's a zoning change.
Right, I guess.
So it would just be on low density, and that's why it's more like, well, maybe we just say, we don't put a moratorium on it, but we kinda have an idea that we're gonna not have any major push on moratorium, or no push on low-density until we have a better feel of where we're at as a council, with land use amendments, transportation amendments, planning staff, all of the above that we know are kind of roadblocks to us right now, Planning Commission member being down, so on and so forth.
Yeah, well, I think another argument you could make for it is that, I don't know that we've talked enough about, you know, how we're dealing with our staging plan.
Sure.
How we're releasing 2020 land, which we have not done yet.
We've not, nope.
And I, I certainly don't know that I understand what process we're gonna use.
Sure.
At that, and that would buy us some time to get that.
Correct.
That figured out, and maybe.
Officially.
Maybe it's just me that doesn't understand it, but it.
No, no, it's, it's something that I think, I, I have a feeling this update will have a few things in it, quite a few things in it, but.
Once we do the transportation plan amendment, you're talking, yes, so once we do a transportation plan amendment, that will lead to a land use amendment, because we'll wanna adjust land uses, and then we'll have to do a staging plan amendment, because we'll wanna figure out how fast we wanna get the road there.
Right.
Because if the current plan is in the way it is right now, it's not gonna be till 2050.
You know what, one other thing I didn't mention, but I, I thought was important, is I, I still think we need to look at how we approve, how we, if we can stage land in three-year chunks, or, I don't like this 100-acre thing that we've been doing.
So you like some, like, substaging?
I'd kinda like some sort of large area plan.
Oh, sure, okay.
And we have no mechanism for that right now, I, I just think that the way we do land in, in these small chunks is, is we end up with this 10-year staging time, which, which we may or may not have regardless, but, to me, I think it, we could plan things better if we simply said, we're gonna pull this 300-acre chunk in to current, right now, and now we got, you know, it, it, to me, it gives us a, a much better handle on our volumes.
Sure, I don't know how that would work with the comprehensive plan process?
Well.
That's what I don't under, know that, and maybe John would know that more, but I don't know that.
But I think that's just another, one more discussion that I think we need to have, how we, how we do that, because I, I also think that, you know, if, if you can, if you can design a bigger chunk like that, I suspect you can optimize things a lot better, but. So.
The development staging's dependent upon your utilities too, so it does have to do with proximity to infrastructure.
Yep.
Which, anything south of 125th is easier for us, if there's a way to control anything on the north end, or.
Yeah, there is currently no utilities north of 117th.
Right.
Well, there is on the north end of town, but, I meant like in the, from there to Elm Creek, is basically, there's no utilities north of 117th.
Basically, up to South Diamond then at that point.
Correct.
How long are, are we, I don't know, is somebody proposing this, but, what period of time are we talking about?
Until we feel that we're good to go, I mean, last time.
What kind of a timeframe are we on the transportation deal?
Oh, so we have, we have transportation plan amendment, the plan is to have everything wrapped up and have kind of the blessings and good to go by April, so we have meetings planned in February with the county and with Met Council.
Won't happen in April.
No, I mean, like, not, I should say, sorry, kind of the blessings and stuff done by April from Hennepin County, from Met Council, the official adoption will be four months after that.
Yeah.
So that'll be August or something, but.
Well, you mean, by the time we're ready to submit it?
Yes, but then, no, time is accepted, so the idea is to have it planned and ready to go to Met Council by the end of April.
I will be surprised if we get it to them by September, so.
Our plan is to be done May, April, early May.
Or lots of extra meetings.
It's not the idea, yeah, so it's supposed to be, we're trying to be with, like I said, we have planned meetings with Met Council and Hennepin County in February here, and then we'll have follow-up meetings with the council, because we already kind of know the direction the council wants to go, based on the transportation plans that we've looked at and discussed.
Okay.
And say, here's what the best option is, and go from there, so, March will probably be the next time we touch base.
So then the best, which, which is the best way to word this, moratorium until September, or?
Till fall.
No change in zoning until September?
Till fall, something, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, you gotta put it out there, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that we, you know, put a, put a deadline on it, but I know last time, we just turned it on, and we said.
It was a year, so we did a one-year deadline.
That's about the longest you can.
You have to do, I think you have to do a timeline, so it has.
I would imagine, yeah, otherwise you just keep kicking it down the road.
Correct, but I think the one, a year.
Yeah, you're only allowed one year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't remember us talking about a time.
It was one year, though, I know that.
No, I mean, when we, when we put it in place, because I don't think we had intended it to last a year, but it, it did.
Correct, yeah, and that was, that was what was written in the moratorium, was one year in time.
So they just set the max?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I, I guess I'm, if we absolutely know that we can do this via.
Zoning.
A zoning, I'm just, I, I mean, to me, that's kind of a little bit funky, if you, if you have an application, you say we're automatically saying no right now, it's a de facto moratorium.
Then you might as well just say that, that's in fact a moratorium, basically.
Yeah, and that's why I'm, I'm not sure what, what the moratorium.
Yeah, so there can't be, we, that's why the discussion's on here tonight, to figure out what the direction would be, and for us to have official moratorium, we'd have to a public hearing, that's why, what I'm gonna discussion here tonight is so that we can post for the public hearing, because it has to be done 10 days prior to the council meeting, and so based on the last timing, we had the last council meeting, it wasn't enough time to post and get a public hearing posted and everything else.
Okay. And the idea is to get that in before the next council meeting?
Correct, yeah, because there's three weeks until the next council meeting.
Sure, in my opinion, it doesn't really matter, you might as well call it a moratorium, because that's, in a sense, what it is, if you're just gonna say, well, we're not gonna change any zoning until fall, and if you go into the fall, you're almost saying until next spring, basically.
Well, and we may have zoning requests that aren't under the low density.
Necessarily not a low density, yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
Correct, you couldn't do a, a no zoning change, because if you had high density come in, that said.
Right.
We want to do high density, we can't change this zoning now, and now we're saying no to them too, which is not the idea that we wanna do, we would like to have some high density put in to help our.
Right.
Not council numbers, put in, for three units per acre.
So, do you have an idea how many houses we have that could be built in approved plats at this point? I haven't seen that number for a while.
Yep, I don't know that number, but I can for sure get an update, I went by the wayside when we had all the planning staff go away, and then, timing and so on and so forth with staff needs, but.
But it's still that, six or 700?
It's probably, yeah, it's probably that much, I would say.
And then plus whatever ends up happening with Braber, I guess.
Yeah, so what I can do is I'll provide that, that Excel file that I had done before, lots available with building permits been pulled and so on and so forth, and our anticipated time of ending, if they continue on that same rate, so, but that was an Excel file that I, I provided in the past, I'm pretty sure.
And what was phase one of the Braber Trails?
Two?
Two, yeah.
Sixty lots, I wanna say it's only 180-some lots that are supposed to be approved in that whole plat.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's not a lot, I think it's supposed to be 60 or 70.
So there's, okay.
It's not a ton, and most of them are all Villas-type.
That end, yeah.
Yep, that would have been far west end of that, that plat.
Okay.
I'll work on getting that Excel file up to you guys this week.
And what we are talking about wouldn't have any impact on that?
Nope, it wouldn't stop building permits being pulled, it would just stop new plats from coming in, so basically, we wouldn't be able to have, like, a Riverwalk or a Braber and Trails 2, those would not be allowed to be, again, platted, we could do a concept plan, so say somebody wants to come in and say, hey, we have this idea based on where you're at in your transportation plan, and we're happy to share that once we get there, but, they could bring a concept plan and say, we'd like to do this in six months or something. And say, oh, that sounds great, that's good, or no, it doesn't enter. But preliminary plats, we would not allow.
Great, I wanted to be clear on that, I guess, because I know we have a certain number of housing starts baked into our budget for fees and so on.
Yeah, it would not affect those. Would not affect any current plats that are still being built out. Cypress Cove and Braber and Trails itself, Sundance Green, Sundance Wood, and so those ones would not be.
Except for if you stop it, then in how many years?
Oh, yeah, if we stop moratorium, yeah, if we have a moratorium for more than a year.
That is a valid concern.
And then you continue that moratorium, then we would run out of lots eventually. There never would be a valid concern with that, yes.
Where is Riverwalk at?
They're gonna be.
I know where it's allocated, but I'm just wondering where it's at in the process.
John, have they officially submitted their second edition yet? They've officially submitted the second edition? Okay, so that's where they're at, they're on their second edition.
Okay.
And I don't remember how many additions it is in total, though. I think it's five or six, and I could be wrong.
Yeah, I don't remember.
But it was just short of 300 homes in that total development.
Okay. I believe they brought their price point down.
Yes. It was quite high.
Probably a good idea.
So, yeah, any other further discussion on this? Kind of getting a consensus from everybody? It sounds like we wanna just put it out there and do it and then.
Help us get our.
Feet underneath us and get more information for everybody before we move forward with stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think I would be okay with it if we, because we've got some compelling reasons to take a pause here. I would, you know, hope that we're gonna work on these things while we've got this time.
We have to, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the staffing piece is one of them, but, you know, getting the transportation plan finalized and talking more about this, this whole staging plan as it, well, it's gonna be impacted by the other things we do, but, you know, how we, how we release land in the future, I think we ought to have a better, better understanding of that before we resume.
For sure, yeah, this doesn't, does not mean that work stops on our end of education and trying to figure out all the stuff that you guys need to know. It just means that we put a pause and everything outside coming in until we have all of our feet underneath us, for sure.
All right.
Cool, thanks so much. We'll have it at the next meeting, and Amy will post that so we can, public hearing and such on that at the next meeting.
Item G, water sewer plant.
It should just be, if you go to the PowerPoint down. Yeah, and then.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have some real brief information just to share a little bit of the general involved with the comprehensive utility plans. The purpose of them is they identify the ultimate system necessary to supply or service the city upon full buildout. They provide the framework, they act as our guide when developments come in so we know what to build during this development such that it can accommodate future development as well. We do recommend that these are revisited and updated. Probably 10 years is a general timeline, but more importantly, when there's any significant changes done to your overall comp plan as the land use and some of those things have definite impact on these where they should be revisited, so adjustments can made, be made sooner rather than later. And I'll just point out, the last time they were updated for Dayton was 2005 for the sewer and 2007 for the water, so probably overdue at this point. A lot of the work has actually been constructed that should be updated. So just a general view of what the plan, in all simplest form, if you will. It shows the catchment areas for the sewer and how the pipes will be routed to them, ultimately to connect to the Met Council sewer lines. And then similarly, the water, it shows where the sources will be, so where the wells will be drilled, where the treatment might be located, where the towers would be located, and then the main lines that would distribute water throughout the city. Obviously, there would be many more pipes than what's shown on the map, but this is kind of the backbone or the framework to get it distributed throughout the city. So proposed with the updates is, and this is probably one of the biggest ones, is just to update the ultimate system. You have the plan from '05 and '07. A lot of that has been built through the development that has happened since, since those plans were, were put into place. There's modifications, as you can imagine, these are a guide, they're not a design. So they, they guide us on how things are built, but there's adjustments made to accommodate possibly the phasing or other improvements that are, are made with the development. So getting those changes in so they don't snowball, if you will, into bigger issues down the road is important. So that would be the step one, is to put things in that were proposed that have been constructed, now call them existing, and then adjust the proposed from there. We look at the existing system just to make sure that there hasn't been problems that have been overlooked, that have been created already, so we can adjust them sooner rather than later. We'll verify the assumptions, this is largely due to the land use just so we know that the design is still adequate for the expected buildout of the city. And then we'll look at the costs associated with that system. And not a real tight-defined scope on this, but we'll work with Public Works and staff to see other components that might need a closer look. Most of them probably related to the water system, just, are we going in the right direction on storage? Do we wanna look at maybe a separate system to serve the historic village in a short term or maybe even permanently? You know, different treatment options for the different parts of town? Is surface water supply still something we wanna consider? Different inter-community connections and supply? Do we wanna maintain the connection with Maple Grove or move away from that into our own supply? Those types of things, just so that we can evaluate that during the process. So our recommendation is to offer is the proposal as prepared, and again, we'll work with staff to refine that scope and, as we work forward, to update that plan. And just a note, if there is interest in learning more, discussing more of these ultimate systems, we could certainly, I would recommend a work session or somewhere with questions might be the easiest format. Questions ahead of time would be great. We could put together some information and present more detail if desired and work through it that way. That's all I had.
Does this, how much will our, this amendment we're looking at doing the transportation line use? Is it gonna, in other words, I'm wondering if we should pause this for six months or you think we can, you can work around it?
I had the same thought, so we, we will not wanna finalize this until that is through. That's, that's certain, and I've discussed this internally with our staff as well to see, let's not do something we need to redo, right? So we would take this only to a point, which is pretty close to the finish line, actually, as far as the framework and the layout for it. The parts that change is the actual demand. If something's single-family residential versus commercial, water use goes way up, water, wastewater goes way up. So that's, that's more so of sizing and kind of final calculations, if you will, rather. So we're, we're confident we can get the majority of the meat, if you will, completed for the report. But again, we won't move forward with anything until that land use especially is final or what we believe will be final for the foreseeable future, at least. So we're not inefficient or doing any rework, so.
So I thought recently, didn't, we discussed this a couple of months back. And I think you basically said, well, the framework, framework we have is good enough to work with for now.
It is still a guide. I'll, I'll say, the more we build, the more nervous we get because lines have shifted, lines have changed. I'll just give an example, there's a line on Liberty, not that this would be extended anytime soon, or the Grayco site. That line was actually picked up about 17 feet, the lift station relocated. That's not reflected in our calculations. So those are all changes that have been made that need to be incorporated into this just for safety's sake. So again, good, you could keep operating under the same one, but I would say you just have an increasing risk level.
I'm just looking at the idea that if it was okay to work with a couple of months ago and now all of a sudden, two months later, we're talking about spending 100 and a half. And this, to me, we would for certain postpone this until the whole plan gets finalized here on what's gonna happen.
I would say there's, there's still much value in going forward with this now. That would be my recommendation, that there's still value in doing it. There's been enough that's been accomplished and constructed in the last, whatever we're at, 15 years since this was prepared or more. It's still recommended you move forward, you have this plan. It really should be done with your overall comp plan. There was reasons it wasn't, there was a delay in getting the plan done. So we, we've been talking about this for eight or 10 years, actually, about updating these and haven't done it just because that plan was delayed. The, the future land use plan was not finalized for some period of time. Now, as it was, there's discussions of redoing it, so we kept holding on it, so.
Do you foresee that, I mean, obviously, RE zoning is going to have some impact, but is it gonna be not much to worry about or is it?
Again, that would be in the final calculations, the pipe size, and usually that would be the upstream end. So if that were confirmed, the result would be maybe some of your pipes shrink a little bit, but the network and the layout is probably the same. The other approach might be, you might wanna size it for that in case there's anything that changes in the future. It might be RE now, but a future council, there might be decision to, well, let's sewer it. And then we would want that capacity built in, so.
Okay.
So I think you answered one of my questions. I was wondering, I think it said in the narrative that something that should be done every 10 years, and we're at about 16, but I think you spoke to some of that already. My question, and this is gonna come up again on the next topic, but, you know, did we budget for this? Or where, where would we pay for this out of?
Those would come out of the respective funds, so one out of sewer, one out of water. They were budgeted for in our long-term plan, in our CIP budget. They're actually budgeted for, I believe, in '21 or '22. '22?
Okay.
So it was '22, so we budgeted for them last year and didn't do it because we were working on other items that had come to fruition before this one needed to happen. So we kind of pushed it online. So that's why you don't see it maybe in 2023's CIP or long-term plan, but it was there last year.
So are we sitting on that money then, essentially?
Yep.
And just to save me time, on the, on the next one related to pavement, is that gonna be the same situation?
You got it, same thing.
I think we're also due to revisit at least the water fund, I thought, or at least. I think the last time we'd actually done any planning around that was four, four years ago.
You mean the long-term plan related to water?
Well, the, the cost projections, adding in the long-term, any long-term stuff into that and figuring out what rates needed to be, I mean, we kind of put it on autopilot with this.
Yep, we did a utility rate study five years ago.
Right.
And maybe even six years ago now you did it. This year was the first year we did not have it. We weren't operating by the autopilot program based on the fact that we had usages and we could use an internal spreadsheet that I designed to project out where we're at instead of having some other person do it, which was AEM before, and paying another cost for another study. You just had me do it, do a spreadsheet. So, yes, we are sitting on that money. It was planned for. The pavement management will come out of the pavement management plan fund, 414 fund. And the other ones will come out of the water fund and the sewer fund respectively, depending on their price and stuff. So we'll make sure that when Sand Tech does their project, they'll disperse all which part they're doing at sewer and which part they're doing in water to that the respective plan pays for the update on the comprehensive plan.
Will, Jason, will this, I guess because of the timing on it, you're gonna be incorporating sort of larger changes like the water treatment that we're anticipating coming, that those get folded in? But it seems to me like we've messed with the plan enough here by tying wells together and adding that and whatever we're doing with the old village.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That, again, some of the infrastructure, that hasn't physically been built yet, but it's certainly planned, so that would be incorporated. Right now, your plan has a centralized treatment for the north half of the city, and that would be switching to this, I'll call it satellite treatment or the wellhead treatment in multiple locations. So that will, yeah, that can certainly be reflected in this.
And the possibilities of another six or seven million dollar grant? That weighs on this also, I would assume?
I wouldn't say necessarily. I think it's, would maybe push items to be further done quicker, sooner. With water towers and wellhead treatments and stuff like that, more towards the north end of town with the store village, but yeah, it's all.
Well, that'll come into play on this work.
It shouldn't come into play in total because the grand scheme plan won't change. It's just depending on when we build it, that will, that will change. We've always needed to prepare for providing water to the store village and a water tower because of needs for constant flow and such. It's just, when will that happen? And I believe it's in the plan currently to have that already there. It just hasn't been constructed yet, but that may be pushed forward depending on what we get for grant money. It's still there, it's still on the plan, it's just, the plan doesn't tell you when you could do it, it just says, here's the plan. And then that may be pushed forward depending on dollars as they flow in.
Would, as part of this, would we also take a look at what we're doing on the south end of town? We're using Maple Grove water. I know there was plans to try to get away from that, that I'm not a fan of, but they're on the plan.
I think that's probably the most critical piece of this plan because that does greatly affect your distribution pipe sizing, so that changes the network a lot. So if we supply all of our own, we have a local source, we need the big pipes at the source. If we're buying from Maple Grove, we need big pipes at the border. So that, that's gonna be step one, nearly, other than updating what we already have built. I guess it's step two, is deciding how we wanna supply the south for the, for the ultimate system.
And does this include some of the work to determine whether we can continue to bank on?
On the wells.
On Maple Grove. Really? Because I, I agree with Dave, I think we need to seriously look at that.
Yeah, we certainly can. I mean, we have an agreement now till 2029.
2035.
2035 is when the agreement ends.
So we have that in place. We can certainly talk to them about extending that or writing clauses now if we want something to certify that later or if our plan is to move elsewhere. But absolutely, that's one of those, with those inter-community connections that I mentioned and the, not specifically defined, defined scope, but absolutely, those can be part of this effort.
Yeah, Maple Grove has been, I know we've talked about this before, but Maple Grove's been hesitant because they said it's so far out, why would we have an amendment or an adjustment or an agreement that's, you know, 15 years away or 10, 14 years away?
Yeah, and I think that's, that's probably okay, but there's still things. I know I read in their comp plan that they're not planning any more wells because they feel like they've got capacity forever, but that there, there was some mention in there about us and perhaps Corcoran needing to add water towers just for firefighting, pressure and volume, even if we're on their water.
Correct.
So I think there's pieces in there that are not incorporated if we go down that road.
Yeah, they, that's incorporated in a long-term plan. I don't know if it's incorporated in our.
Well, there's a lot of.
Ultimate buildup.
A lot of activity in that south end that, you know, with, with the well and so on that maybe isn't all valid anymore, but.
Yeah, we did amend that, so we just, we don't, all we have is a water tower in the south now.
Just the tower.
That's it, just the tower in the south now that's on the long-term plan, and that was amended this year. Because we took it, we had everything two years ago, then we removed everything last year, and then this year we added back the water tower for 2023 long-term plan. Just the water tower for that pressure purpose.
Well, it seems like we need it.
Yeah, I think I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it anymore, are you, you good? Or at least? Good enough?
I'm just surprised it was okay a couple of months ago and now all of a sudden we're gonna do it, but. Easy come, easy go.
Any other discussion? So we'll need, I assume you're, you're looking for a motion here, right?
I'll make a motion to approve this study is.
You second?
I'll second David's motion.
Okay, any other discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
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 As opposed to say no?
No.
Okay.
Just be that guy.
Three to one.
I just think it's premature.
Okay, item H.
This is very similar, so pavement management plan, again, for the infrastructure system involving your roadway network. Little bit different here, this is, while planning for the future, it's existing infrastructure more that we're, we're managing and dealing with. So what's currently been the practice for. So what's currently been the practice for pavement management within the city? Just to note, there's roughly 70 miles that Public Works is responsible for. So that does not include obviously Interstate 94 or any of the county jurisdictional roadways through town. So about 70 miles where it sits and just a side note, the last three years we've increased by roughly four miles per year. So there's a pretty considerable amount of roadways being constructed with the development that's coming in. That will continue with that being done down in the industrial area as well. We have Detroit Lane Extension, 121st and additional length of West French Lake Road Dayton Parkway. So we're going to have some more coming in in future years. So right now, we use a Pacer, which I realize now that I spelled wrong. It's actually P-A-S-E-R. System that public works staff completes that they simply just go out and do a visual inspection of the road, determines rideability in their vehicle and then assign a rating to it. And that's how the conditions are assessed throughout the city. That's just done on a routine basis. And from there, generally it's a budget-based approach, meaning how much money do we think we have in the plan? What can we do for projects with it? And that's how the projects are selected. Not uncommon. This is a simple but effective way of running a pavement management plan. Some downsides to it, but upside being very simple and easy to implement. So that's typically been done in the past. Some of the downsides of it is it's very hard to look at the system as a whole. In other words, if we do this project or these projects and take these off, how is our overall system maintaining? Or are we keeping an eye on proper maintenance to extend longevity because we're just looking at current index of or condition of the pavement? So difficult to look at it system-wide and then the budgeting component of it, it's not, it's difficult. I have on the slide the no condition-based method. In other words, we can say we have this much money, what can we do? But it's very difficult with this system to say, here's the condition we want to achieve. What would it take to spend? That's a very time, very involved process, iterative process to try to come up with estimates. So what we're proposing with this is this all gets kind of automated, if you will. So it's something Stamtech has been developing over years and implements all over North America and probably beyond, to be honest. I'm not sure if they do work outside of the, of North America or not on this, but it's a pavement assessment. So instead of an individual using a subjective numbering system or assessment of it, they actually use specialized equipment. They drive all of the roads. It records all of the data and then it builds the condition and links it to each of the roads. So it's repeated exactly the same on everyone. It's not depending on the weather or how much coffee the person had.
Doesn't say their mood.
Very objective instead of subjective. All that data is brought into a GIS database, which you already have. So you already have the segments in GIS. We've been using that previously, but all of this data will be linked to that. And then the benefit of that is it's very simple to update. You can do updates through GIS to individual segments or as the system as a whole with a few clicks of the button. So great from that standpoint and then very, very helpful in the budget scenarios because this does allow you to run different scenarios. The main ones being, I mentioned the budget. So once you have this and all your conditions, you can put in, we're going to spend $2.5 million a year. What do we get? And it'll show, depending on what timeline you selected, it will show the deterioration of the roads and how well that will keep up. Or you can run it the opposite way and say, we want a minimum or an average of a system condition of 70, 70% of 100. And that will say, okay, you need $3.2 million per year budgeted for it. So, and all of those are a few clicks. Marty's been part of a couple demonstrations with this and it's literally a few seconds of input and all of this information is just spit out and mapped. So it's great for presentations and graphically be able to demonstrate how that affects it.
When we were looking at this, the different modeling aspects that you can put into there and run different scenarios. So, you know, you put in, if you did just an overlay, what lifespan would that add to your thing? When would you have to? It would model all that deterioration in the road out as well, which I felt was a really good tool in this. And it helps you to balance your costs out that way as well to see what you're actually getting for your money.
To me, that's the biggest value with this whole deal because I personally think, and to have, to know what it's going to cost down the road for the next two years, four years, five years.
Exactly.
When did, we did South Diamond in what, 14 or 15?
15, I believe.
To me, that road's not going to make it another five, six years. I mean, it's alligatoring something horrible. And what does it cost to replace that road from here to Rogers? Because to me, that's not very far away and we need to start banking that money now.
Well, I think it'd be nice to have a tool to plan with. Right now, we're taking a guess at what we should put in the pavement management fund.
That's where the, how much does it cost to do those five, four or five miles?
Exactly. You can at least predict what we need to have in it each year to stay on track because there's a cost in waiting with any of these roads. You let them deteriorate further, then it's not a mill and overlay, it's to get deeper. I'm using all my technical terms here.
I don't see the value in the machine that they drive around with as much, but I see the value in calculating all the roads. You can walk out there and tell me that South Diamond is alligatoring. I mean, anybody would see that.
I know. I think what I like about this is some actual scientific data that you're collecting, not just poking your head outside the window. And it's the same for every road in the city. So you've got a flat play and feel against every road that's in the city.
So it's measuring, say, crack densities and stuff?
Yeah, I won't pretend to know all the technical ends of it, but it does use like laser information for measuring crack frequency and west. So we're underlying materials. Yeah, it's actually pretty sophisticated equipment that's used. There's only one of them in North America. We drive it all over the continent to do these. So scheduling is a big deal on these, just to get it in the right spot, but.
The one concern that I had is that, I believe it said we would not see a draft report until October. And that gets pretty deep into our budgeting process to be able to try to anticipate, you know, what we've talked about, how much a year should we be putting into that fund to make sure we've got funds available to stay on the plan.
I just think that number needs to be, to me, closer to a million a year because it's coming and I just see it coming.
No, that's a fair point. And I don't, I'll be honest, I don't know where in the process it'll come that will have a good handle of the appropriate budget, but that's a valid point is to not lose another year. Let's get that figured out and see if we could, I'll make a point to, I'll have to discuss that with our team, but make a point to do that so we can get a better estimate for the 24 budget than we might have had otherwise, so.
Sure.
Yeah, I think if we could see something sooner, at least to get into planning for 24, far as that would, that'd be valuable. And then we're not sitting on it for a year before we can do, you know, before we find out our guess was wrong.
Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to know, one of them is how soon we can get out here. We want to get on the schedule so we can get out here, but being that, again, this is all over North America and we're in the winter climate, they don't want to come up here until probably June just to make sure all the frost is out and the conditions have kind of, so that might send us, set us back a little bit, but absolutely, we can look at expediting and getting at least the cost, getting an estimate of the cost.
Is this, once this cost is incurred, is it just every time we do this, we're going to, is there any one-time cost here? Or is this all?
I don't have it in front of me. I believe, so I think it was about $41,000 total. I think one of the items, and I forget if it was task three, I'm going off memory from a while back now. I want to say it was task three, was something like a first time setup. So that would be eliminated, but largely the same. I think that was $7,041, so.
It's a one-time $41,000 cost, right?
For this part, yes. For this.
Just to X-ray all your roads and get that data all going and.
And get the whole program set up and everything. So I think the rest of them, and there might be some savings once it is set on those other ones, but I think for now, I would say it's probably, you know, still 80% of this for follow-ups. Even though it's being repeated, they are new analysis and budget scenarios that are being run. So it's the process being redone. So I think a lot of this would be each time.
And how often with this system would you need to run this on the roads?
It'd be up to what you want to spend. So I asked that exact same question of the individuals doing this all the time and they recommend probably a three years inadequate. Some will go as often as two, especially if there's a lot of.
Construction going on everywhere, yeah.
Some will space it a little bit more just because of budget constraints. So I think our recommendation would be three or I guess better yet, what my thought would be is let's do it revisit in two years, see if we want to schedule it again the following year if we think we have more life out of it and can push it off and look at budget constraints at that time.
Certainly going to depend on how big of a disaster it is for that first go-round.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll get surprised.
A little nervous to see the number.
It's going to be scary.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll be surprised.
It's going to be a big number.
Okay. Are we, are we good then? That's all we have. Okay. I need, yeah, it's a little disappointing, but.
Around what we're going to talk about approving, but there's a couple of optional items in there.
That's what I was going to ask, David, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So Marty and I talked through these and our thought was let's not implement those at this time. Let's see, at least I think, I think I'll speak for both of us. Our thought was, okay, let's wait and see if it's something we missed. So if we, if we go without it and we look back and say, we wish we would have got it, let's get it on the next round. With the possible exception, and I don't remember the number, but it was the last bullet is the decision tree analysis.
Yeah.
So that's something we wouldn't have to commit to now. That's something we could add on because that isn't something that they, they don't collect the information any different. So that would just be an analysis after the fact. So again, our thought on that one is let's get the data, let's look at it. And if we feel the decision tree analysis would be helpful, let's, we'll schedule it at that time. So let's hold off on committing to those costs until we determine we really want them.
Then we can call it a change order.
I was just going to say, so you're not setting this up for a change.
I wasn't, but I love that.
41 now, but we got another 60 later.
Okay. I need a motion and a second.
There's more value here than the water thing, so I'll make the motion.
And I need a second.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? You good? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
41 aye.
All those again, say no, 4 to 0. Okay, item I, production well number five.
I think we're all familiar with this one, but I just threw a couple of slides in here for location just to refresh memories if needed. Well, number five is in the northeast part of the city, showing with the circle. It's in the River Rock Development. So just, this will be the third well on this system that serves this part of town. So just a little bit closer look, that's the layout of the River Rock Development. The red X represents the site that was negotiated during the, during the plating process. So that was reserved for a well site. As I mentioned, it was coordinated with the River Rock Development. We did complete a test well. The results came back and determined that the site was viable to support a production well. The plan was approved by council at the December 13 meeting and bids were open on January 12. We did receive two bids as shown, so the low bid was just under $300,000 with the second being at about $386,000, which was right at our engineer's estimate. That's where we expected it to be is the higher of the two.
And refresh my memory, Renner was the one that did the failure deal, right?
Yes.
Good.
Is, is.
They're all.
Is, do you think? I'm just wondering why the significant delta, it seems like something like this would be kind of boilerplate and yet.
There's probably a building change order.
I was wondering if there was some.
Lot built in.
So one thing, one thing that we have seen is their costs, because they only have single rigs and there's not too many players in town, their costs will often be a reflection of their availability.
So they'll make it painful.
They'll bid high and if they get it, they'll.
Adjust the schedule.
Adjust their schedules to maybe make others suffer, as you will. That's part of it. The other one is depending on the type of drilling, sometimes, and to be honest, I don't remember which of these two companies it was, but they have to rent some of the equipment. So that can, if there's certain conditions.
Sure.
Is that right? Okay. If there's certain conditions present, they actually have to rent some equipment, which produces an additional cost as well.
There were some big disparities in some of the items. Their mobilization was way different.
Yeah, what is that, by the way?
The mobilization.
Just to set up.
It's, it's.
Is that what that means?
Guaranteed cost, if you will. So it's to get the guys, the equipment out.
I was hoping it was something fancy to do with Aquifers or something. Driving there.
That's the general one on all the projects. It's getting your equipment and your personnel out and maintaining the site.
And we've had, it seems to me we've used.
Yeah, we've had both. They did well three in the village.
I think they did some work on the well number four.
They did well four.
They did do.
They did well four, yeah. I thought I'd seen them.
Yeah. They've done half of our wells, actually.
Can you go back to the picture again?
Yeah. This one or the other?
Are we, we are running basic, are we running a pipe from five to four? I mean, we're not just pumping into the system there, right? We're actually running a.
We normally would pump right into the system, but because of the wellhead treatment that's going to be installed at four, there will actually be what we call a raw water line, so an untreated water line dedicated just to connect between the two. So, and that has already been installed. That was installed with the first phase, coordinated and installed with the first phase of River Rock Development. So that's already in place.
Okay. Yeah. It just, I guess getting back to our original system, pump two, I never understood why we didn't run that directly to a location such as the tower in case we put in treatment.
What it would have been is the, well, the tower and the treatment don't have to be tied together.
No, they don't.
But there was not a pipe. The current plan does identify a centralized treatment on the north and there was no water, raw water line installed. And I don't know the reason for that either.
I can give you an explanation, but you can figure it out.
I presume the, it was anticipated, the treatment was just going to be west of here, that it just would be extended under North Diamond Lake Road in the future.
Okay, I need a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve trout companies.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries 4 to 0. Item J, planning commission member.
So I sent out an email. You guys have received all of the applicants. So we had three applicants. We had Bob Hertz, Nick Go and Ryan Molson. So what I heard back from the council is that you were comfortable making a decision off of the paper. If I did let applicants know, we have two of them in the audience, that we'd be making a decision tonight, so.
So have at it. Are we, we just, I mean, typically I think we just.
Yeah, so.
Piece of paper and fold it up.
State statute doesn't allow us to do private voting technically if we're not.
Oh, I thought we always did, so, okay.
So yeah, you just have to be comfortable.
Got lucky last time.
Really? That's helping.
I know we've done it that way before.
We've done it a long time now.
And I got called out.
Yep, she got a deal that.
That's how Dennis got, that's how Dennis got in.
That's, that's how I didn't get in one year.
You got any legal issues.
Yeah. Somebody's got.
I'm saying is, it's not how you play the game, it's winning that matters.
All right, so who wants to, who wants to start off here?
Do you want to go for a motion?
You can have discussion, or you can just straight up make a motion. I don't think it really matters. I can let you.
Well, this has either got to be Ed or Nick, or.
Yeah, he's got a job, hopefully.
Ed.
Okay, well.
Matt did email me if you want to know what he would pick. Obviously, he doesn't get a vote, but he did recommend Mr. Hertz.
Okay, well, I, I guess I can, I can start off if we want to. I'll make a motion to, to move Ryan into that spot. And I'm saying that because he's got quite a few years in the city, he's got a lot of touch points in the city, he's fairly vocal about our, how we manage our planning. And, yeah, he's talked to a lot of residents, so, and he's certainly not afraid to make his voice heard, so.
And his weight should be.
And that's, I, yep.
Depends on the subject.
Probably depends on the subject.
Yeah.
All right. So there's a motion.
I want to be the swing guy.
You want to be the, you can have that job forever if you want.
Yeah. It'll fall, fall aside if there's not a second.
I'll second it.
Need more discussion then? All those in favor of appointing Ryan to that position, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
No.
Pass is three to one. With that, do we have any other items? We will be adjourned.
We still have one.
What?
The work from home thing.
No, that was in.
That was on, what's that here? I got a comment about that, I want to bring that up again.
Okay. Can't. Karen made your point.
My comment was, is in this description thing, on page 29, telework location and equipment. B says the teleworker, worker will be responsible for all costs related to improvements in his home if necessary. All of a sudden, C says, at the discretion of the workers' department head, he can get his furniture if he wants furniture. I am not okay with somebody getting furniture to work at home.
Yep. This was written by DDA. This was taken from DDA's study, so.
It was part of that grant.
To me, we should scratch C.
Sure.
Well, what, what does that refer to, like a chair or?
Correct, yes, so it says, B, B that says the teleworker will be responsible for all costs related to improvements in the home, the teleworker shall be, shall provide all necessary office furniture, also responsible for all costs maintaining the work location, water, electricity, internet, so on and so forth. At the discretion of the teleworkers' department head, ergonomic office furniture or equipment may be supplied to the teleworker, which exactly contradicts what B just said. So don't disagree. You can scratch C. Sure. Sounds good.
Then I'm okay with it. I'm still not okay with the work.
We approved it already, but we can most certainly look.
Yeah, the other deal is, we keep harping that we don't have enough staff here, now all of a sudden we're going to let them go home and stay at work, and work from home.
Well, you know, it, it probably depends on, you know, your competence of staff, because, I mean, we do, I mean, our work, we, we work from home two days a week.
No, I know you can.
I can tell you.
I know a lot of people do.
When it was five days a week, it was extremely inefficient.
Oh, yeah.
Even at, three days a week at home, it's, it's touch and go, but two days is, I don't know.
The idea is not that staff.
And you guys got to work it out between yourselves, right?
Correct, yeah. The idea is not to have staff in the office, it's the fact that we also have limited spaces too, so as we add staff, we're going to need to utilize our, our resources the best way possible.
Shared spaces and all that stuff, yep.
Yeah, is that we might not be able to have everybody in the office.
We talked about that.
You might not be able to start this tomorrow.
Correct.
But it's.
It's a process to move forward.
Are you setting some sort of target, like a day a week or?
Correct, it'll be public office with a day a week for now, and then we'll go from there. If it doesn't, if it doesn't work out, then we can go backwards, but at least it's a start process to be able to provide more flexibility to our workers and employees that they have a day at home, and it would rotate. So it's not like everyone's going to get, or this expert's going to get Friday app every week, or Friday work from home. It's going to be, okay, this person gets this Friday, and next person gets this Friday, but rotates through.
You guys can figure that out.
Correct, yep.
I mean, we technically already.
Just so we all of a sudden don't get a, how come he gets to it, how come she gets to it?
Correct, and that won't, that, yeah.
All right. Now, if there are no more.
So we'll go back and amend.
All right.
Number C.
Get rid of C, because it is going to happen. 100%.